This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
And here's the change. This still needs legal review, so. Because one of the things is the map that we can talk about. I'll just talk about that briefly, what Alex Google talked about. And so, so we're gonna start with this one and have our.
But wait a second, you weren't in here. Before we even go into the old code, if someone has a question on something, then we'll go to the old code. Otherwise, we're gonna go through and do this, and that's.
Well, I'm gonna pull out the sections and say, I really wish we could have it up there, because then you could see.
I know, hang on a second. Seriously, let me do it this way, because we'll start on page 20 right now, and then everyone look at that. The graph that's there. I don't wanna, I don't wanna read it. Does anyone not understand?
Well, that's not page 20 for me.
No, no, one of the bigger, did you get the bigger?
No, he doesn't have the bigger writing.
Can you?
Right, I found it. It's, it's right here.
Yeah, can you hear it, Chris? Do you know?
Here's the.
So it's eleven dash two dash one. So we'll just go by chapters.
Yeah, they work perfect.
Instead of page numbers.
And some of this, it looks like is a little bit of what James was talking about, but this ordinance duties and responsibilities, and it shows everything there as far as the.
Except who does what.
So look at that right quickly, and if anyone has any questions, let's make sure those are taken care of, and then we'll go into.
So this was a way to do a flow chart of who, who does what in the process of the zoning. In the thing, yeah, in the what the zoning administrator, what the zoning committee does.
So right now, our, is our zoning administrator?
Yes.
Till April 1st.
Okay.
And I think that should say zoning committee or zoning commission. Or maybe it's a committee, because and then design review, board of adjustment in town. The reason, what a new thing out of here would be the design review committee is kind of, that was the difference between our old code and our new code, is that there's a design review committee.
Who is the design review committee?
Well, if we pass it, we would have, they will say in here. They go through here and it gives the purpose of it, who the memberships are, so that will be on eleven dash two dash five.
Does anyone else have any question, other questions about the chart?
So should we read through it, or?
On the chart, you guys. That's why I'm, we'll start reading as soon as we get to chart part. Do you have any questions with that?
So the zoning administrator will receive applications, he has an A, so he has the approval authority to determine completeness, that's the zoning administrator, minor site plan application, zoning administrator. There's also major site plan application, sign review, design review, planned unit development, conditional use permit, against building permit, certificate of completeness or occupancy, zoning map amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, enforcement action, annexation, appointment zoning administrator, appoint members of boards and commission.
Hey Jason, I'm sorry, can you, on the chart itself, when we're going into this next part, it'll actually go through each part of their thing. I said, the chart, we can leave that to the side, so you can go back and look at that. But it's like, if you look at eleven dash two dash two, it talks about everything that the zoning administrator does.
This gives you a visual representation of what's written down. So, so you're, if you're like, oh, who does that? You know, when it comes to variances, the zoning administrator can make, he can review them and he could make a recommendation.
So we're gonna go.
The design review may.
So let's go to eleven two two, and just keep that chart in front of you, that way you can look at it. Employment responsibility, the town shall employ the zoning administrator. I don't care. It doesn't matter what one or the other. The zoning administrator may delegate certain functions, but shall retain final responsibility for administering and enforcing the ordinance under the direction of the town commission. Duties as zoning administrator, the zoning permit provision set forth in this ordinance shall receive applications for conditional use permits, rezoning requests and variance requests, review applications and plans, review certificates of survey issuing or issue zoning permits and inspect premise and properties. Notice, notify and writing any person violating this ordinance and order appropriate directive action, order removal, order illegal use of land structures or buildings to be terminated, and illegal buildings or structures or additions, alterations or structural changes there to, to be removed, order compliance, order any illegal work being undertaken to immediately cease or take any action authorized by this ordinance to ensure compliance with its provisions, stop orders. Assure that stop work orders remain in effect until advised by the town commissioner and its authorized representative in writing that the application and or project has been brought into compliance with this ordinance and by service and advisor to the zoning commission, board of adjustment and town commission on matters relating to administration enforcement of this ordinance. Prepare report, prepare staff reports as required under this ordinance. Age report, prepare and maintain records of all proceedings required or authorized under this ordinance. That was quick, hopefully you guys were just reading, I'm just giving you a little.
So those are all the duties of the zoning administrator?
Yes. Now, as you go.
There were no changes from old code to new code on that one.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
There, just, just for us, there was a question, there was one person that made comment when this was out about the right of entry, whether that needs to be in there or not, so we might wanna take that. And then when this goes through legal review, ask about that clause.
Okay, so do we even need to go over that, or do?
No, I put a mark on it.
Okay, shouldn't we have something in there that like, you have a sort of like a policing type person that can go actually like inspect places?
That's what the zoning administrator is.
Or wouldn't they need to be, have the right of entry, just like a cop?
That could be, that's, that's the legal question, that was, I don't know, a builder brought that up, and so that might be something that we clarify, yeah.
So do you have a question on that one specifically? I'll read that if you have a question on that specifically.
And that is in our old code, that was copied right over from our old code, so that did not change.
Can I just put legal, so we've got a question, so we'll ask him on that. Unless, if you have a question, we'll go into that one specifically, if not, then.
No, let's keep rolling. Okay. With zoning commission, is that Mr. Green was talking about?
So zoning commission or committee?
Eleven two three.
Eleven two three. All zoning commission really does is their duties are to make recommendations to the town commission. There is zoning districts and regulation. And so the next time we wanna update this, or we wanna update the map, they'll review it, or if someone wants to come in and say I wanna change this from residential to commercial, then the zoning commission should review it and make a recommendation.
Oh, we don't have one.
Technically, we do.
It's us. Right, it has to be made up of five or less people, isn't that what he says?
Uh, well, the zoning commission is three people. That is the board of adjustment. It gets really confusing.
That comes up next.
Yep, so that comes next. So the zoning commission, all they deal with is basically the map. If you look at this, they make, and they only, they are, they don't make decisions, they totally make recommendations.
Because then ultimately, you guys would make the decision.
Yeah.
And permission.
Or the board of adjustment.
Yeah. Okay, so does anyone else have any questions on zoning commission?
The only.
Chris, are you good?
Yeah.
The only difference here, I just wanna point that out, is that the person who serves on planning or the zoning commission also is our representative on the planning board. So we thought that having that same person, at least one of them being the same person, would give transparency of what was happening in NS to what was happening on the county board.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Okay. Board of adjustment, eleven two four. Establish membership terms removal, the board of adjustment is hereby established to decide variance requests and to decide appeals regarding ordinance interpretations of the zoning administrator. The BOA shall have a minimum of three members appointed by the in its town commission. Members of the town commission may serve as the BOA with terms concurrent with their respective commission terms. So that's one of the things that Jim was talking about. Technically speaking, you guys can be the board of adjustment, it's whether or not that's what you wanna continue on with. This beaten issue is the one where we've run into this, we've not had a problem with this before. It's a potential where we could in the future, so we need to decide down the road, if you guys want to actually appoint, if we can actually find some.
Yeah, we can put in there, we can find some people. And then if we can't find them, then we just have to serve.
Yeah, because it doesn't come up that often. But, okay, and then I guess we'll just have to check the statute, if it's three people, or we need to have five. Like he said.
Okay.
And that's for the board of adjustment.
Yes.
That's for the board of adjustment.
And the power of the, we'll just go into the powers, great variances from the various standards of this ordinance, where the board determines that they need specific criteria outlined in this ordinance. This ordinance, A, this ordinance variance, variance request for only certain provisions, the board of approval may approve neither conditionally approved variance request modify only the following requirements of this ordinance. So setback requirements, yard requirements, area requirements, height and bulk requirements, parking requirements, and loading requirements. So that, from J to O is all their real power is right there.
Well, and the formatting on here is off, because you can see the letters are off, so.
Yeah, but just by what I've got there. Really, I mean, it's pretty much what we do at this point in time, I'm not sure if that's something that we need to change up, or if we just leave it as is.
And that's essentially that's essentially what it is in the old code, that hasn't changed.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions on the board of adjustment, or do we need to go into that a little bit more, or do you feel good with that?
Do you think we would maybe spell out a few more things on that that we talked about earlier?
Such as?
Well, our would be, hang on a second, I'm sorry. Basically, what Jim is talking about in there.
I think, I think that, I think it's in here, we would just have to outline the process of how they do these things.
Okay, so.
So do we need to put that in here, or is that something that?
Uh, it could be just like a supplemental document.
Okay.
If you wanna put that on the side supplemental document about the process.
Document. And I can ask one more question before we go. Process. Because he got me confused, I was gonna ask him, but he talks forever, God bless him. Why couldn't we use special exemption things instead of in lieu of variances?
Because the variance travels with the land.
Okay.
And so, and that's because the variance is something that's prohibited. So a special use permit or a conditional use permit is for something that is allowed. And you'll see it more as we get, it's something that is allowed, but under certain circumstances.
Okay.
Where our variances.
Somebody just stopping at that question is gonna be kicking around the back of my mind in telegraph. Okay, anything else on eleven two four? Did you guys, are you good now, Corey? You feel good with that, with having that?
Basically, the supplemental document, you could lay out a little bit more.
Yeah.
And I've got that written down here for you, so we'll get that.
And I think we'll need a lot of those.
And who's gonna write that, who will be in charge of writing these things?
It could be up to the zoning administrator, yeah.
Because that's why I wanted, we'll start that off.
Or we could have Art do a rough draft before he leaves of that kinda stuff, to have a basis to go off.
So, actually, it only makes their job easier, when people are like, how do I build a menace, and you hand them a packet that says, I'll. Exactly, and it would be great if our code was interactive. What was wrong with the old code is something, you get something, one chapter that says, you know, you can't do A, B, C, or D. And then you go to another part and says you can't. So.
You remember your own adventure books back in the day? That's how we do that thing is.
Exactly. That's exactly what it is, and so that's why it would need to be updated.
Yeah, this thing is so much more streamlined, but, okay, let's go to design review committee.
So this.
Go ahead, I was gonna read that.
So this is, this is new, and the reason for it is to, what we were hearing is that people want to preserve the integrity of our small western town. And so these people, it's just design review, so when you're building, and these are for large scale projects, if we go back to the little chart. They're only possibly reviewing some stuff, and that's if you know, the zoning administrator needs some additional guidance, that they can review it. They don't up with anything or anything like that, they just make recommendations.
And would it be, would it be able to say this leads on streets, properties?
It could be.
Yeah, exactly, and it does say, it spells it out on their on the back page. So that's what, and so we get people in our community, so like when the town hall, you know, redid, or we get another large scale project, we could have people in the community come together and put their input and help, and help guide that process.
No, you feel, you weren't part of that, but we've just said, yes, you can do whatever you want without us putting our footprint on that a little bit, it would, could have just been a standard building, we have designed things that we were putting in there, which a committee would do in general. They put the little town of Anisting on the one side of it, they've got the trim, and it actually looks decent where it's not just a standard building, and that's what we want to avoid with this design review committee, is that we don't just, at least to use as the example of the Verizon building, there's a Verizon building that's just the crap, but then if Bozeman forced them to go in and put all the design on it and make it so it looks good, it looks part of the community, and that's where we are holding the we can do that and not just allow standard buildings and just to turn us into another town and maintain what we have.
Yeah, so you look at the, yeah, the Verizon building, Bozeman, or even Bell Free, they're covered in red, yeah, but anyway, it's not designed to hold up the part of the process, they have to do it in a timely fashion, and if it can't be done, it moves through the process. So it's not to be encumbering.
Is there any sort of framework that the design review committee would follow, like these are you know, things they're saying, like we want?
Your design standards, that's gonna be in here, yep.
So do we need to go over that a little bit more, do you, because if you want, anything that you guys wanna go over, we're gonna go over. If you don't feel comfortable with it, I'll read the whole thing.
I like the idea of using my house, a very unique house in town. How would that fall into?
It wouldn't, no, houses. We're not looking at houses, this is only for, look, it's for projects for let's see, planned use development, conditional use permit, zoning ordinance amendment, major. So yeah, so it's not, it's not houses.
Sorry. That was something, I was, when you guys initially did the first ones, is they thought it was houses stuff, right?
And, and that's not, that is not what it is, this is for our core corridor you know, projects that.
Makes sense.
People want input on, people wanted input on town hall, you know, and if something else blocks comes in like that, people want input.
Well, you knew that, they did some to Gennaro's too, right?
Uh, he, he, it was called an Overlake district, and we did have some a little bit of input on that, yeah. So, and that was something we'll get into.
And that is an example, I'm just using an example of what that part would be. Does everyone, do you need more review on that, or? Corey, you good? Johnny, good?
I'm good.
Okay. Or Jason?
No, I'm good.
Okay. And then you guys can take these and read these as, and if you have, come up with questions, we can also come back and more, I just want you to, you know. Okay, zoning permit, eleven two dash six. Let's, I'm just gonna read the actions and the permit issues. Actions that may not require zoning permit, certain actions may not require a zoning permit if deemed to be exempt by the zoning administrator. Such actions may include, for example, painting and minor repairs, landscaping work not involving structural retaining walls or other minor improvements or replacements in time. The zoning administrator may issue a zoning permit when the required application has been completed and the administrator has found the proposed building structure, parcel, or use will meet requirements of this ordinance. Does anyone have any questions on the zoning permit part of that?
So you'd have to get a zoning permit and a building permit, right?
No, this is only a zoning permit.
I was saying, no, they're putting the same.
Oh, they are.
Pretty much, zoning permit, site permit.
Building permit.
We didn't call it a building permit, Jason, you don't call it building inspector. And the permits that we're putting out now are pretty much just dealing with setbacks and heights.
So they examine permits?
Yep. Making sure that they're, you know, following the zone code for that zoning district. Sorry, did he say?
No, that's okay, no, that was a great clarification, thanks for doing that.
So are there any questions on zoning permit, or anything that we need to go over more on that? I'll give you a second if you want to.
No.
Open through it, okay. Zoning permit fee required?
That says they don't, he doesn't review it until you pay your fee.
Application for something permit, plan, review, and approval. I might wanna go through this one a little bit. Just quickly read through it, that's better than me reading it, I'm gonna have a horse left by the time I'm done with it, but if there's something that we need to talk about, just take a second and read through it.
It just says what type of plans are. If it's something simple, like it says, if it's something, a single family or two family residential units, fences, home occupations, it can be something simple, but if it's something more complex, they need better plans.
Like when we get to the major site plan, which is page twenty seven there. Four or more dwelling units and multiple family structure or structures, five thousand or more square feet of non-residential space. More than one building on one site for permitted, office uses permitted, retail, commercial uses, permitted industrial uses or permitted combinations of uses. Or four, ten thousand or more square feet of exterior storage of materials or goods. Parking for more than ten vehicles. One thing on this one, what difference is it from the old one, is it, or was it just cleaned up?
I think it was just cleaned up from that, and I think we, yeah, like people are gonna want, you know, the big multifamily units goes in there, the neighbors are gonna have them, yeah. There's a new review.
I know your pages are off a little bit.
So let me see.
So we're, we're still under.
Eleven two eight.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Can I comment for a minute?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, zoning permit. Sounds funny to me, I, I think what we need is a building permit that fits zoning regulations.
Okay, is that?
I agree with that, yeah.
Building permit that fits, so how, we learned that on eleven two six?
Well, why don't we just?
Building slash zoning permit, what's wrong with that?
Well, I think we just ask, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, make that note and.
Right, just put it, put it in parentheses next to it, I mean, I thought that it's. It says right here, a zoning permit shall be obtained for the zoning administrator before any land or building may be used or occupied, or before any building or structure may be erected, placed, moved, expanded, or structurally altered. So it covers it right there, it doesn't matter.
It should be called a building permit, not a zoning.
Sure, you made the, we don't have a building inspector.
Right, but I, I've heard it referred to as that, that's what I wanna call it all the time, and.
That's what we all.
It gets confusing, so I think for simplicity.
Builders, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the zoning permit instead of building permit, it sounds weird.
Okay, anyway, so maybe zoning permit is okay, I just just was wondering.
Yeah, because I know people are like, who I need a building permit, and that's getting confusing, so, but I think if we did have a page that said so, and that might be something that Jim can clarify, if it needs to be called a zoning permit, because you don't have a building inspector, that's a legal question, so.
Okay. And then we'll get back to eleven two eight again.
So the bottom of this just talks about how long people have to, or how long the zoning administrator has to approve or deny, so it doesn't leave people hanging, so.
But is that within thirty five days?
Yeah, so like, well, in the minor site plan, a person has twenty days. And they should be notified in writing within five days of that decision. And then, yeah.
I think that's probably appropriate amount of time.
Yeah, and like, yeah, so.
Yeah, and then, so on eleven two eight, does anyone else have any other questions, or do you like a little more time looking at it? Before we jump to eleven two nine? Jason, are you good, or?
Yeah.
It's a lot to digest, so there is.
And then there's some, again.
I know, I've read it like three times.
So it's quick for you, that's like, because if you have questions, or there's something that you don't understand, I definitely wanna stop and take the time now, so we don't have to stop and take the time later. I'd rather stop and take the time now, that way you can get some of it. Okay, eleven two nine, site inspections.
Pretty basic there.
Both seem like common sense, I think that's why I don't understand how it's different, or?
It's not, so, it's, it's really not, it was, you know what changed on most of it? Is the formatting, like he was saying, it was a two year old adventure, now it's like streamlined, and so that's what it is. The one moving, if there's no questions on, when it takes, and so site inspections, that might refer back to right of entry of the zoning administrator, so we might ask, highlight that, and have it fit with eleven dash two dash two.
Is it two, eleven?
Eleven two dash two.
Okay, I'm just gonna.
Make sure that those two things work.
Or if we don't need one of, one or the other.
Yeah, but I think it just outlines, it just says again, that once you file for a zoning permit, we have the right to inspect your property for. Compliance, yeah.
Any questions with that? Okay, eleven two ten, limitations of zoning permit. Uh, I'll just read that one really quick, I think we've already come over that.
Yeah, it basically says that you have one year to start, if you don't start, you have to reapply.
Yeah, which is, should be.
Yeah, so.
But there's no limitation on how long to build?
Uh, let's see.
Is that later?
No, it says, let's see, show, provide written notice. It doesn't, not right here.
When's your question?
Doesn't go on a deadline on how long they can build.
No, but it does have the certificate of occupancy, they cannot they have to get that before it can be opened as a business, or they can't like have completed and then move it. And that, and that is a change, that was recommended by. And that, and that is a change, uh, that was recommended by Great West Engineering, and I think even Art said that is, is that, that way if something does have a lot of conditions on it, you can make sure that they're all completed before they get the go-ahead, so. And that, yeah, so that was a big.
Hey, who, who issues this certificate of?
The zoning administrator, so they'll come in, do their site inspection, okay, you were supposed to be, I don't know, I mean, if we have conditions on, you know, building a sidewalk, or, you know, like, that one that we did, that site plan that we did on Stephan Street, oh, okay, you had your parking the way it was supposed to be, or whatever, whatever we laid out, or whatever the town commission lays out, he makes sure all those things are checked off the list before they can do it.
Hey, uh, does it, does it say in there who's going to, that's something the town will enforce, could we have? Some more, uh.
Okay, I'm gonna have a little sidebar here with this one, uh, with Art going away, what I'm potentially looking at, and you guys will have to approve it before we do it, is having a zoning administrator such as Art, but possibly also having that person act as the zoning enforcer.
A compliance officer.
To make sure somebody's, they're doing stuff.
Yeah.
There's so much going on now without a building inspector, I think we should be.
So it all depends on which applicant, sorry, I'll get you, uh, depends on what applicants we get in, we might run into someone that is looking for just a little bit of, uh, work extra, or we might run into someone that wants a forty-hour job, it all depends on what we have coming into us, and we will vet this one very hard to make sure we are well taken care of, and then we will decide amongst ourselves, you guys will make, actually probably make the decision as to what you wanna go forward with. Do we wanna have someone that way?
Or be the judge, the administrator, and the compliance officer?
He's not, he is right now, but essentially, but he's not gonna be here anymore, so that's why we're, Ginger's gonna put that. Yes, just as the judge, so the new third person that we bring in.
For power law, you want?
His, uh, judge till twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
Is that what the? Something like that, yeah, so he's a judge, but, uh, he won't have anything to do with the zoning.
So it'll be administrator and compliance officer in one.
Depending on that applicant that comes in.
That will make sense.
And I think that would take care of a lot of our problems right now, because, uh, we've got, he's conflicted because he's the judge, John doesn't think he should be doing that side, that's a whole argument that we could go, and if we just hire one that does all of it, and takes care of the whole thing.
So where's the compliance officer in this? Do we need to have wording about that in here?
We very well might, we don't have it that in.
With the zoning administrator, an extra thing that his duty is to be the.
Well, we probably thought, wanna have something separate, and maybe this is a question for Jim, uh, because then that way, it could be two different people if we wanted it to, instead of.
Or if it has to.
Or the other thing we could do also is potentially, uh, we're short of half of an officers, for lack of better terms, we could also hire another officer for the part-time and make them a zoning, uh, compliance officer, so there's a couple of different ways we could go, but I, but I would really like the best case scenario, in my opinion.
Somebody that does both.
Yeah, that does both, that just deals with.
Yeah, well, they would have to be, yeah, they would have to be in communication, but and, and it might be work cabinet separated out, so you can say.
And it's not in here going through anything else, okay?
Did you notice I are somewhere about a compliance officer?
Mostly that I was writing it in as I go, but I don't even have a spot for it, so. So, we're, we're being.
So we're on conditional use.
Right, it says, just for clarification, doesn't, doesn't, uh, John Moore and, uh, Art both kind of share, or that's.
Yeah.
Their responsibility right now.
You don't say no, they kind of.
Yeah, I mean, it is an ordinance, so.
It's just a, and all the, his, uh, argument a lot of times on that is it, they haven't really broken the law, so he's gotta be sent out by Art, and Art, yeah, it's a whole uh, thing that we need to go away from. Hey, uh, Sarun, replication of zoning permits?
It does.
Yes. Anyone have any questions with that? What do you want?
Eleven dash two dash eleven, it just says only the town commission can revoke a zoning permit.
In order to. This might be zoning slash building would be.
And it says, it, and it gives, it outlines why they can revoke it on the next page.
Those two, two points, 'cause zoning permits may be revoked for good causes, Christine. Revoked for respect, only be initiated by the town events.
Yeah.
Would be the person who's in charge, but only the town commission has the authority to revoke it.
Yeah.
Not the person.
Yeah, exactly, it's the town commission, so, okay, so say something gets approved, and it says that it becomes a public nuisance or imminent threat to public health, safety, and general welfare. So, I don't even know what would fit that example of why this.
But we got it in here.
But we got it in here.
Just, uh, well, you, it's better to have more and make sure you're better.
We're gonna revoke that shit.
And then it outlines the certificate of occupancy, if someone has an appeal, what that appeal process is like, that's what that talks about, eleven dash two dash thirteen.
So, uh, let's just stop this for a second, when we're talking about the, oh, no, I can't even talk about, never mind.
So that's what it talks about, and that's part of the, that's what.
And people don't do this currently.
No, I don't know that we, I, we may have an appeals process.
I think there is, but I think it was scattered around.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, just the certificate of.
We don't do that, and that was something that happened, and then also right, uh, Great West Engineering events, that was brought up several times by several different people, like, why don't we have this as the standard?
So like, you finish your house that's ready to move into, then you gotta go get, or.
Yeah.
Certificate to move into your house.
Yeah, or just, or, yeah, and then like.
Why would you have to do that?
It just, that, that you.
It says it right here.
Yep, it, it, yeah, 'cause that's making sure that you did everything that you said you were gonna do.
So you have, like, say.
This be on that paper that, that we're.
Yeah.
Gonna build and hand out.
Yes, yeah.
Let's say that there were conditions to whatever you're building.
Yeah.
That's when you make sure you did all those.
Yeah.
So Larry's building a house out back, and he, uh, has to make sure that there's the certificate at the end of it.
Yes.
Once these are adopted.
Once these are adopted, yeah.
So then the town would know the house is completed, and it's lived, completed.
Is that standard practice?
It would make sense that you would know somebody now is living in that house, I mean.
Well, and it also.
Is that a reaching, or is that real?
You can put it just in certain zones, but it's to make sure, like, stuff down in the, what they call now, you know, the core corridor or whatever, it is standard practice, and Art brought it up.
Were you overreaching at that point in time?
I don't think so, so it's just like, hey, uh, all done, and they come out and go, okay, well, it shouldn't be.
Well, you have to do that anyway, 'cause you're gonna have to get your water hooked up, you know, turned on, and.
Yeah, all of that stuff.
You gotta let them know that, let us know that they're using the sewer, stuff like that. And you can, the, the certificate actually dictates when you can turn a house. You have to have this certificate.
You can't limit it before.
Maybe it's just the name of it that's throwing me off, because, uh.
Yeah, you could call it, you could call it certificate of completion.
And which would make more sense, I mean, I think, I think it's. That's why they, it's throwing me off, because so once you, once you finish that project, whatever you wanna do with it, it's, uh, I think the name of.
Yeah, let's just read it through.
Both towns have them.
See, I think, 'cause once that, once building construction of a development activity has been completed under a zoning permit, a certificate of occupancy must be requested from the town in its audit form provided by the zoning administrator, the purpose of the certificate is to ensure that all work described on the approved zoning permit has been completed, or as applicable, a surety for performance has been provided. Should a certificate of occupancy be applied for in the months of October through March, a sure, surety may be provided in lieu of improvements that do not affect the immediate and safe use of the site. And that cannot be installed during cold weather periods, sureties may include letter of credit bonds or certified checks left on file with the town until such time as improvements are satisfactorily complete. Personnel, personal or company checks cannot be accepted as sureties. Failure to obtain a certificate of occupancy prior to occupying the project or improvement for which is zoning permit was issued is deemed a violation of this code.
So one of the things that that was specifically for is when they may go cut into the pavement, and if they don't fill it, then they may have to cut, so, so when they make it. So that's kind of what it's for, 'cause right now, you know, if they decide.
It actually says most home loans don't give you your loan unless there's a certificate of occupancy at the end.
Yeah.
So I think we should probably.
Kind of protects, like, the buyer, or someone who's buying a new construction, that it has to be completed before, you know, they can do it, so.
Okay.
Well, does it help us, uh, keep people from occupying structures they shouldn't be living in?
It, it.
Have a certificate.
And how you have the certificate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, like, the, uh, I mean, that'd be projects that don't have siding or roads on them, say.
Hey Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, what I, what I'm wondering, uh, is this putting in us, us in a situation where we're gonna have to have a building inspector?
Well, I think this goes to, I think this is, that was under the zoning administrator too. That was defined as one of their responsibilities.
So is the zoning administrator gonna have to be also a licensed building inspector?
No, this only, the zoning only goes that it's, it's talked about the setbacks, the heights, or whatever, so say that someone came in for, or they said that they were building their house, it was twenty-five feet tall, they had built, building it thirty-five feet tall. You know, that gives us that you can't occupy that house until that process goes through, or saying, um, the road cut, also, like, if there is a business that we're gonna require, you have to plant, you know, fifteen trees, or whatever, and has some kind of, anything that has a condition to it, then all those things are gonna have to be completed before it can be, uh, considered completed.
I'm gonna reread this, 'cause this'll tie that up, the purpose of the certificate is to ensure that all work described on the approved zoning permit has been completed.
Yeah.
So that pretty much just covers that, are you in disagreement with that, Kelly?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not gonna say that your, yeah, that your electricals aren't the standard, or your plumbing's. Not that, no, it's not that.
Okay, let's go into, right, does anyone have any other questions with that, from the one that caused that one? We're gonna do one more, and then we're gonna, I think we'll make two more, I might chill this at about eight o'clock, and then we'll decide when we wanna meet again to go over some more of this, I don't wanna. Well, maybe I might keep going. Zoning appeals. Just read through that one really quick, if we have something there, uh, we'll talk about it.
So we just, are we gonna get to chapter three and then stop? That would be a good stopping point.
Yeah, we, we can get through it. We got bogged down there a little bit, let's, uh, if we don't get bogged down. Okay, but anyway, zoning appeals.
Pretty standard, so.
Give you a couple seconds, just yell when you're ready. Looks good to me. Yeah, Corey, you good? Or, if you need a more, some more time, I'll give you some more time, say you want more time. Okay. Uh, variances. Uh, I'm just gonna read A right here, and then we'll go through the board of adjustment day, in specific cases, grand relief from Stan, the standards and requirements of experience are set forth in section seventy-six dash two dash three twenty-three. Montana code and an aided, Francis shall be considered, only be considered for the following requirements, setback requirements, yard requirements, area requirements, height and bulk requirements, landscaping requirements, parking requirements, and loading requirements. Do we have it in the current code for landscaping? And I was bringing this up, because this was one of the kickbacks that we had gotten from the public, and the first, uh, thing was, uh, landscaping.
And I could be wrong, is like, in the, like, parking lot area, and so I got, and that part of the code, but I don't think there's anything for us to potential or anything. So what, what this is saying, right here.
What are landscaping requirements for a variance?
Well, we're gonna be going into.
Yeah, so what this is, all this section is saying, right here, is that this is what the board of adjustment is allowed to by state statute.
Give a variance.
Give a variance on, whether you have landscaping requirements or not, it doesn't matter, this is all that. And that's specifically lined out by Montana statute, that's the only thing you can give a variance on, and that's why it re, uh, refers to section seventy-six, that's two, three twenty-three.
Okay.
And then this also states how it's gonna be public, and then, like, if you go to.
Did that change a lot from what it was previous?
Not really, no, but it does say that anybody within a hundred and fifty feet of the subject property shall be mailed something.
Okay.
So then that way, they can't say, I didn't know, so.
Rather than just the posting. Okay.
I think that was recommended by, we do. And then it also says, yeah. Shell can talk to hearing, but if that person who's applying isn't there, you can't conduct the hearing without them. And then it also outlines how we can give a variance, and it has to meet those criteria, so. And then it gives the board of adjustment twenty days after the hearing, they don't have to make a decision at the hearing, but they have to make a decision in twenty days.
On variances, we should start doing that anyway.
Yeah, we should.
Not do it the night of.
Definitely, we can gather.
We should hear it the night of.
And gather all the information, and then have, and then, so.
A lot of times, we have. That day.
Yeah.
So you can have a discussion.
Looks better.
You're not wrong, their process needs to be looked at really hard.
If we have twenty days, we should take the twenty days to look at it, too.
Would we put any of, uh, green, long device in here?
Well, I think that's part, I mean, that's part of it, it's a better.
Well, the primary thing that he said today, you know, with the, uh.
In here, we just didn't follow it as well.
They did, it's in here, it's in here now.
He said we need a more formal variance records, like, after we're done doing the variance, and you write up like a.
And that way you can write up the hearing, and then you have another. The hearing could be in the minutes, and the decision could be something completely different, that's.
The thing with that is, uh, I think he was, uh, I don't know if he was going too far the other way, but I, the way I look at it is we should have had more information going into that than what we have, I think, instead of, I was listening or hearing what he was saying. It just.
Hard to be making decisions, or. Art should be making decisions or not decisions, but Art should be standing a little more firm or foot, as he tells some of us.
But what I was saying is, uh, like afterwards, he said, I went back and looked and I didn't see that you guys even made a decision. It was only minutes.
But that's up for interpretation too, because. We took a boat and, and the Montana law, but that is a, that is a decision. So he's, uh, I think he ran a little bit farther that way, because otherwise everything we've ever done is wrong.
Wrong.
Everything could be up for interpretation. And if that was the case, uh, we would have been called out on carpet for something a long time ago. I think it's binding as far as that goes. We need more clarification on that, not just, uh, one opinion.
Yes.
Okay. As where, and I think we need to look into that in order to make sure that we are, when we come in to do another variance or something like that, I'm gonna do a lot of digging and make sure all the way.
I think we need a flow chart of the processes to make sure that.
Without wanting to sure.
Then I think we just don't need to, we, I think that we render the understanding or assumption that we had to make a decision the night of the variances. Now, we have 20 days, so. Why make, unless it's a dry, easy variance, why make the decision?
Well, I felt, I think we fell, and I felt the room that way, that, uh, we pretty much thought the Suzuki issue was that way. And most of them that we, yeah, most of them that we have come in, come through.
Yeah.
Are very, fairly cut and dry, but we'll look at that a little bit more.
Well, the good, letting the applicant know that, just so the expectation isn't that a decision is gonna be made tonight. Say, there's the hearing, then they have 20 days. So, so just that's the expectation that they should plan.
Any other questions on variances? Or are you good?
Yep.
Okay. Conditional use permits. Uh, let's see here. I'll just get the general. Certain uses generally appropriate with the zoning district may require additional review and shall be subject to conditions that will mitigate potential issues. The town commission may grant a conditional use permit when such circumstances exist. The permit shall be granted for particular use and not for a particular person or per. No conditional use permit shall be granted for a use that is not specifically designated or as such, or is clearly, or like character and intensity as a conditional use listed in this ordinance.
This will become more clear as we get into the zoning districts and it lists, uh, permitted uses and then conditional usage. So it's basically like, what's a conditional use and all the things is an essential service. So, you know, if you were, wants to put another transfer station in, we can say, yep, that's permitted, but we want you to, you know, build a fence, do, it, this, this, so it's allowed in the district, but you can put conditions on it, so. It's just explaining what that is. And there is, you want to make a note. We always need to double check, uh, whenever it refers back to planning this development, that it's in the right section.
Which.
It says enough for 13, which is obviously not the number, um, but.
Okay.
So we just have to do some cross referencing there.
Okay.
What question are you?
Uh, I was in. Eleven dash two dash fifteen.
Number thirteen.
Number thirteen. Yeah, well, it was, yeah. That's here. Look. Yeah. So, now here, it's just a cross reference. So, it's.
All right. Did I have temporary use permit?
Uh-huh.
That's for festival, fair, concert, contractor's office, construction building of events of public interest, Christmas tree sale lots, seasonal sales of farm produce. Such other uses as the zoning administrator may deem to be written within the intent and purpose of the section.
So Twin Bridges currently, um, you're heading, trying to get our farmer's market back here in town and what Twin Bridges does, so said individual from Twin puts in for a, uh, Twin Bridges farmer, farmer's market permit. And then, uh, and then basically brings everyone in under their umbrella to cover their expenses for said farmer's market, um.
I think that's more under business licenses. They, they're talking about the fee.
Yeah.
That's what they're talking about, um, so.
That, that he has the administrator over it.
Yeah, so, okay, so it's, uh, so if you wanted to have a farmer's market at your house, you have to, since you live in a residential area, you have to get a temporary use permit.
Then if I want to add it to the Lions Club.
Then you're probably, well.
You still need a permit.
It'll be a temporary use permit too, but.
Whether that's a business permit or whatever, but, yeah, so if you want to do something commercially at your residence, temporarily, you want to sell Christmas trees, you gotta go to temporary use permit.
Right, that's it. I'm not upset about, but that should apply to the Lions Club too, because they're selling Christmas trees downtown.
But that's what I, so when we're talking about zoning, it's only about the area, the, the area that you're in, the district that you're in, so that they wouldn't need a temporary use permit. They might need a temporary business license for that as well, but they wouldn't need a temporary use permit. So this is if you want the set of the Christmas.
It's a music festival back there.
Yeah.
That was, uh, you were doing an event. So an event is where you would go in for something like that, temporary.
Yeah, yeah. So you want to block off the street and have a party, you need a temporary use permit. Those types of things. That's.
So if you, when they block that off, they have to come in and get that.
Yeah.
So just for an example. Anybody else have a question on temporary use? Okay, violations and penalties.
So this just talks about the process of how it goes, um, if you're, you're in violation. And what the, you know, the zoning administrator, how they need to notify you, how many days, that kind of thing. And then. And then it talks, and then it also talks about, uh, the, you know, uh, the fine and stuff like that. And then, you know, if you end up going to court, you could end up paying all the expenses if you lose, so.
Anyone have any questions with that? Uh, amendments to the regulations and map.
This basically says that they supersede all previous maps, right?
Well, this just says if you want to make a, if you want to come in and say, I want to change my zoning. How do you do that? Zoning designation. So if you have, so your neighbors, boarders is, come up and say, hey, we want to turn this into another commercial thing, they would have to come. And it can be, if you see there, it says it can be initiated by the town commission, zoning commission, board of adjustment, individual or group of individuals. So you want to get together with the boarders and say, hey, we want to turn this into.
Or land.
Yeah. You want to turn it into, you know, a festival area or whatever, this is the process that you need. And what the needs, and what the commission needs to do, consider when they're making that recommendation.
Nice. Very good job.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that? And then we go to eleven dash two dash nineteen, pre-zoning.
So all this says is someone has to annex into town, so they have to pick their zoning designations for the weekend.
Any questions on that? Okay, but that will stop right there. Do we have any public comment? Do you have anything? Okay, now the next question is, when do we want to set up the next one to go on to the next chapter?
What about this month's meeting?
I, we don't want to do this in the middle of the meeting.
No, why are we gonna do that? No.
No, we'll just forward this stuff on, because, uh, one of the two things, we only had two things there, uh, was actually talked about right here. I want to go on to our next zone meeting, though. Our next, our next section, okay?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday, anyone have a, this?
Yeah.
John, Tuesday?
Yeah, fine.
I'm fine, yeah.
Yeah. Well, let's get someone else in there.
What time, what time?
Well, we're gonna have time here.
Six to eight is.
He should have been here tonight, probably. Now, we will have some hiccups that we shouldn't have. Uh, so Tuesday, six o'clock.
Yeah, six to eight.
You have enough time for notice? Yeah, so that's enough time for public notes. Okay. I just want to cover all, uh.
Yeah. And I want to add that, yeah, we'll get through this and then we will send this to legal review.
So who is it that's gonna be legal reviewing?
Like, it could be Jane Crayfatt, it could be the Berg Law Firm, it could be, you could get Kelly Lynch from the Montana League of Cities and Towns, but some, somebody along those lines. That's unfair, because we are not attorneys. And we want to make sure that there, we don't have something in there that is not enforceable. Cause, you know, this process started such a long time ago that maybe the state statute had changed. Or there's some ruling that had changed something, so.
One thing that makes me nervous with that is sometimes we'll hand this off to an attorney, we might not see it for six months.
City Attorney, dude, he has done tons of this.
It could be this, yeah, this.
And he has, well, he's got a timeline.
Okay, that's the thing, I think.
He's got a timeline where we, where you live it.
Yeah, he's saying we want you to, you know, review this within thirty days and.
Be the next one.
Yeah, that makes me nervous. I don't want to see it out here. Gilmore had it for six months and didn't do anything with it.
Yeah, and I don't think it's gonna do that to you. Also, and also, we should all know, maybe before it goes to legal, maybe Alex takes a look at it, or maybe we invite him to next.
Could you give it to Alex first, so he looks at it before he comes?
Yeah, that works. But I'll try, I'll.
Or if he comes in, I'll be like, hey, anyone cares, I mean.
Yeah.
I'll check him next.
Yeah, no, and I'll, and I'll send him another, um, email. I think that would.
I have a call.
Um, cause there's been some things, um, to your, that his recommendations are, but he wanted to hold down a whole.
Oh, wait, we're gonna do the official thing.
Oh, you got it.
Do you have that, Luke, with your?
I'm trying to call it, we call it toward.
Well, he did expect you to session, but if you're getting out of a bad session.
So if we're not about to, we won't, and you're the.
You're the first person to, um, yes, so gonna be announced that the meeting is officially over. Okay, the meeting is officially over.
Where you gonna turn?